9.1 first. So, O2, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. We have an interesting story. As you reported last week, I gave a quick verbal update in relation to the science asset. The... although what we have in front of you is our short agreement statement to where we're at with regard to looking at the science asset and how we might go forward. I suppose all I call your attention to is that at some point it's appropriate for us to engage with the people who are to speak here. We also... we need to talk about the size of what was on to... That's simply a brief formal version of what I said in the last meeting. And let me read... there's nothing new that we're going to do. Don't read it as though we're saying we're going to give X, Y and Z. These are very tentative initial thoughts.
Right, we've got councillor Lorimer, councillor Charlesworth.
I've just briefly scanned your report, Tony. The one that we thought very... to the point, dogs can run free.
Well, that's what he says on the website at the moment. At the Street of Panel, we are deeply concerned on all our sites with regard to dogs running free, dog fowling and association with that, the signage that we have on our sites.
The reason I'm asking is because I actually had an incident where I was walking a dog for somebody and there were two members of the public with six dogs and they appeared to have put them on the lead. And then all of a sudden, one little dog came help by letting them over the field and the other one. And the dog I was walking has a special purpose in life. And having owned dogs all my life myself, I feel that there is some sort of bible where, you know, you keep them on the lead. You know, that's why I'm very interested if... I don't know if Ken's got any information or if you know anything about this, but in public, dogs are kept under control.
Not specifically with this side? I mean, there should count it.
No, this is the side that was actually happened to be in.
Yeah. I'm just conscious of this as a report. This is something that the Street of Panel are talking about and it's just a praise and an assessment of what they've been talking about. I appreciate those wider considerations with Woodside and indeed some of our other sites.
Councillor Charlesworth.
Yeah, I'm basically... I'm repeating what I said at the panel meeting this morning, but we've got nearly seventy trees on that side now. They're all alive, as far as I can see, and none have been damaged whatsoever. And it is looking much better. And the usage of it, okay, it's the holidays season as well, has been much greater. I don't know if there's been a gradual awareness within the local public that there is something there. The swings and that being new certainly today and yesterday. Many of the people who've got dogs, one or two have seen off the lead, many are on these and they take them home to sleep at Woodford, as we said before, you've got residents and things like that. But it is looking a lot better. We've got tables and chairs too, I think, is the latest count. And there is a general awareness and appreciation of what is there. That's my impression. I know it's now the summer half of the year and the weather's been quite good, but it is looking all right. I also spoke to some residents up Peterborough Way and they were of the same opinion as well. They've got their own ideas for that, which is not probably quite what we've got on here, but that is all part of the... But there's a general awareness and interest in it now and I would be thankful to the council for what it's done on Woodside. And things are looking, certainly at the moment, much better and I hope we can keep it like that. I'll say more on that at the moment, but thanks.
Councillor Brady Cook.
I'd just like to remind everybody that we do have a Wild Meadow plant in town there on the twentieth. All the schools are invited. They're all going to bring ten children who will be given little crops and then they can scatter the seeds. So that'll complete the Tesco project and that will be your sign off on it. So, yeah. At ten o'clock in the morning, yes please. So, does anybody like to wander down to Woodside, please? Thank you.
Right, is there any further comments? O2? Okay, if we accept that report, then we'll move on, note it.
Yep.
Okay. We've got a request of 9.2 for continuation of the monthly bingo sessions. As you'll be aware, we've been having bingo for the mayor's charities. But of course, we'll be having a new mayor at our annual general meeting. Basically, we need to assure those members of the public that there's a continuing event. And it's very difficult to start a campaign once it's gone. So, we've got volunteers to run it. Councillor Brady Cook.
I would suggest that we continue with them on the five and the day fundraising that's been done in the mayor's name this year. I think it should be a continuing event. It should be ongoing, no matter who's mayor. It should just continue, get life its own and go on. That would be...
Who proposed it seconded, councillor Tivers?
I'm just going to quote.
Okay, who?
Who seconded my vote?
It was councillor Dolby.
Councillor Dolby's in favor.
A kid, yeah, I think he's in his position to the councillor's offer. Is that that councillor, Charlesworth?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you. Councillor.
Councillor McFerson would just like to say something further. Thank you, yeah. You all received the question there this evening. And this is sort of along the same lines. We've realised, this group that's been helping to fundraise, realised that when a new mayor comes in, it takes quite a long time for them to just simply get sorted and then just to put their mind to fundraising, which has to be low down on our priorities because our main priorities deserve people to sleep with. That's what we're here for. Nevertheless, if we could have some ideas of maybe the events that you've enjoyed in the past, maybe five, 10 years ago, I can remember Gordon Blythe, he organised a concert at St George's. The present mayor organised the fundraiser. We want to know that the whole of this current group would like to know and put down your ideas, what you dislike as well as what you like. And we can collect that and leave it then, present it to the next group who may help the mayor, who may well not be us at all. And although Beau put her name on this, it was actually from the whole of the group members. It would be very helpful, please, if we could let this happen back in a couple of weeks.
Can I also extend, if you don't mind extending that to the residents of Salford if they wish to have a special...
Oh, that's...
...event that has happened before?
No, well, I'm not... I'm not willing to do that, Les. I'm not willing to put out my question.
No, the press.
No, no, I'm not, I'm sorry.
I know, but the press.
We do get feedback from the people who come to the bingo.
That's right.
So, we could ask informally.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Now, move on. Thank you very much, councillor McFerson. Onto item number ten, the clocks report.
Yes, I can add a few things to attend to, most of which are verbal. Maybe if you've seen, the tractor shed has been completed in relation to the construction. The second fix has been completed, i.e. the electrics, we've started moving in. The museum stuff has been transferred in, as has most of our parts, that will be completed tomorrow. You will notice in the short term that the wooden council vehicles inside Erresfence into the left, sorry, to the right as you look, as we bring our stuff in and such like, a bit of a squeeze, but we'll do that. So, that'll happen all tomorrow. And as a relation to the depot, most, almost all the work, so the dilapidations have been complete, are a couple of things externally. So, I've been meeting with the... planned a meeting with the landlord in the open next week to sign off the dilapidations. So, the men will... sorry, the service team, other than those at the basement cemetery, will be working out here for next Tuesday. And they will be using this building obviously for toilets, for breaks and things like that. But I'm quite pleased with it as a facility. I think it looks really nice internally. Some of you may have been in it. I must admit, I am very pleased with it individually and we'll grow into the space more properly than, you know, the museum stuff is putting its new look in. I'm grateful for all those that have been with it.
Councillor Tivers.
Chair, you can make a comment.
Yes, you may.
I think they've done a great job. I agree with you totally on the tractor shed. This building, you can almost be proud of that. It's been very fast over the years. I'll know you all.
Yeah.
Let's stand our name on it.
Yeah.
Certainly, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I'm quite happy I can sort that out if I can get something made up from digital platforms for all the people that go... Oh, by the way, just so you know, angry water at last responded and told us that, yeah, we can do the works, but we're too busy. Can you go and get a quote from somebody else? So, there's been waiting for the foul drainage and the water supply. So, I have at least now got that confirmation. So, we're now through our architect's seeking a price for the connection to the mains and such like. So, that'll be done, that will be completed as soon as the quote comes in. If I can, and to escape park, many of you will be aware, and again, thank you for those who've added to it, it was... it was inspected as practically post-installation completion on Monday the third. And we opened it. There's still a few snagging items to be done as far as I was concerned, as your clerk, and that, and the majority of those were completed in time for the weekend. There are still a few odds and sides which I'm working with the contractors to make sure they are completed, but it is safe to use, it is open. Probably would have loved to have a damp hall and shower range to perhaps help with the surface a bit tighter, but it's been very well received as well from what I can see. Like, no real issue so far. The CCTV coverage is absolutely wonderful. And if any of you want to see, you're welcome to go into my office and look through cameras and see what we can see. The kiosk owner is doing excellent business and brutally in time for the kids, I think. For what the town councils achieved through this, I think it must be brilliant if we brought that project through. And I would try and sit down in the next few weeks and sort something out as regards a formal sort of opening. Again, often people have no ideas on that as to what we might want to do. Quite happy to listen. I will speak with the company that awarded the contract to see if they have any ideas about whether they, you know, know of any skateboarders or maybe a pair of visitors or something like that. But I'm certainly pleased as well. But as you have seen, and I hope you are pleased as well, so be to a few minutes' order.
Councillor Cook, your chairman. I did speak earlier today to a skateboarder who said he hadn't had the chance yet to use it himself. He had extremely positive feedback from of the skateboarders that he knows. So, it does seem that the looks have taken to it and appreciated.
Yeah, I'm saying that. The feedback I've had, a couple of posts is on social media, it's certainly gone down very, very well. So, didn't get a mention on the next one.
Councillor, yes.
I arrived last day, it was almost at the evening. And it was good to see younger kids as well, wasn't it?
Yeah.
It was good to have a lot of usage.
Yeah, I couldn't believe it, the week after when we did open it, but I had three phone calls from people living up to forty miles away asking when is it open? But they were purposely going to make a trip there last Easter weekend to use it. So, don't worry. Pat on the back for your award, I can... Have me a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that's the skate park update. And some of you may have noticed, the earth that has been left there is sculpture. I didn't get rid of it because I'm going to be asking you if I can use it at some point in the future, but I'll come back to you with a report on that if you want the one still there. It has a purpose in my mind and I will report to council appropriately. If I can, Chair, I couldn't mark it on there, but that was me missing the fact that I was conscious that the working group had met with MKDC a couple of occasions, but I'm led to believe you discussed it at your meeting on the 29th. So, there's nothing more to add on that, if I can.
Okay, 10.2, if there's no further questions.
10.2, I had an email from the Stipend Museum complimenting certainly the excellent... we've had the Shaldre exhibition downstairs, which has been kindly put together, Adrian and Gary and others. And I think we've got some pictures on Facebook as well, Chairman, and things like that. So, they really wanted to say thank you very much. We did use some of the SMT's artefacts and stuff like that. At the time, I wanted to make sure that for me, you know, the formal appreciation was given to everybody involved. And that's why I put it on the agenda, so we do at least recognise or contact the SMT because the display's going to be taken down. I do believe that, I think Dr. Stephen have expressed an interest in it. Am I right, councillor Tivers, that they've expressed a chance to reuse some of the items?
I'm sure, I think we will have a re-exhibition in June for our courses.
Right. But I just would like to, councillor, if you can, I'll note it in sense of your reading, I offer, the Clark Office formal appreciation to those that contributed and those that did it, if that's okay. I'll take that as a... Your... Sorry. Clark, I would be keen to acknowledge the SMT's input to the artefacts of the office.
Okay, or move on?
Yeah, 10.3, I'm just, as your clerk, our annual meeting is on the 17th of May. So, we move into a bit, we're coming to the end of the first year of the Annual Constitution. For me, as clerk, I mean, to go into a meeting on the 17th, I don't want to go into it without knowledge of what you as group councillors might want me to do. I'm very conscious of the constitution as it exists, whether you feel anything and that needs to be remembered. I've obviously got to consider the panel particip... the panel maker and participation. And of course, you know, and I have to be honest, we've got chair, vice chair and leader roles to think about filling in that. So, my question to you, this is me asking you whether you want to meet with me next week to discuss those items, because I don't really want to come into a council chamber on May the 17th with nothing and then we end up, as you might imagine, with chaotic voting procedures and things like that. So, it's your call. I'm asking you, do you want a meeting with, well, I say meeting, do you want an administration meeting with me next week? But if you do come to it, I would ask you to be, to look at the constitution and then, you know, make suggestions to me how you want me to fill, deal with anything that might happen at our annual meeting.
Councillor Cook, I just wanted to say I'm in favour of such a meeting.
Yeah.
On car breakers.
I know you can't all make it, but I, for me, I think it might be a good idea because what I don't understand is things being fired in from the shop floor. We've got a month, probably only got, the 26th of April is our next formal meeting, the Meeting Act of August, the annual 10 meeting, 2010, we would be coming in. That's why I'm suggesting a month period.
Councillor Lorimer.
Yeah, I unfortunately come to tell you because I'm a new brief friend. I did send you an email yesterday, Kelly.
Yeah.
Am I allowed to, in my absence, send some comments or...
I'm actually...
What I'm actually, well, obviously, we've got them to decide on the new mayor, mayor, vice mayor, leader in May. But what I'm interested in as well is the composition of the panels. How are they going to be actually done?
I agree, that's why I'm suggesting...
Heather, I think the idea is to go and either be there or to go and send to the clerk your suggestions.
No, but I, yeah. Because in the past, when you had committees, you got a list of the committees and you put your preference, one, two or three, and it's a fair way of doing it. So, what I'm asking now is, are we going to, at this meeting, are you going to provide the list so that people can put down their interest in a particular panel?
I may well do, on the back of the mood at the meeting, I don't know. It's not for me to act so forward. You make your own, you make the rules in conjunction with...
Well, yeah, that's why I'm asking, anything...
Yeah, but I don't want to go ahead of myself, councillor Lorimer, since I'm asking you, do you want to come and up cup tea with me next week? And I can just broach some of the issues that may have come up on the May 17th meeting.
Councillor Brady Cook.
Perhaps if those people that can't make this meeting might put in their thoughts and then it can all be read out or...
You can't make any resolution, anything like that is an immediate briefing.
At least if they get their statement.
To tell me what you want me to look at for the May 17th. Is that all, and that's all I'm asking. I haven't got the time, you should remember, with the committee structure and the meeting schedules as we have, to sit down in four weeks' time and then think, oh, how am I going to bring to account on May 17th?
Well, perhaps in that case, you could read out the email I sent to you yesterday and any other thoughts I have.
Okay, if there's nobody unhappy, I think you can say that...
Cup of tea with Kelly, I might even buy some cake. It's six o'clock, I'm suggesting, isn't it? I'm on your own time. But thank you for that. And like I said, if you don't have to attend, I do ask if you are there, then you're sort of broadly honest with me. So, you know, there will be some stuff we have to deal with. Thank you, Chair, and thank you also. Six o'clock next Wednesday.
Right, on to...
10.4, yeah, again, I put this in because I realised when I was at Gray, your meeting last week, there was some conjecture about the mayor's allowance. Well, I think the report self-explains, I think I basically explained the whys and wherefore's, but in relation to that, I just want you to note the report. I've given you the answer. Basically, a chairman was admitted to spend his, in year, as he so feels, so feels, your constitution says, if he hasn't spent it by 31st of March, it goes back into balances, which is something we discussed last time. So, there's your clarity you asked for. Nothing more to be done, unfortunately for councillor, for the mayor. It didn't get spent either 31st, so there's nineteen hundred pounds of revenue in our balances.
And I actually say with the council, Melissa, I understand has resigned for his input and gone to this last meeting.
I wasn't here, so...
Yeah.
I just want you to know, you have to just note that, you asked for an answer, I apologize, I didn't realise questions from my two staff at the wrong meeting wouldn't have had the knowledge to answer that question for you, so... But it does make a question for whoever's mayor next year, if they want to spend their full allowance, as long as I make the payment payable to them as an individual and they choose how to disperse it, that's fine, that's acceptable. Okay, but our constitution, there's a might be another area you might want to change, you might want to tweak that, because it does say our constitution, any unspent mayor allowance, which we don't, council balances. So, I clarify if that's anything.
I thought it was quite reasonable to suggest that it did go to a non-spent balance to a charity. Mayor, yes, to a mayor or charity. Having, because I think I've been very careful in how I've spent your councils' money, and that's why it was balanced.
Councillor Brady Cook.
And on the back of this, I was quite surprised, I suppose, to understand that any fuel, people who've taken you to events and such like, they don't come off the mayor's allowance. That comes off a different budget line. I was quite surprised at that because I assumed wrongly, obviously, that that would come out of the mayor's allowance.
I assume that as well.
And I think possibly that's...
Yeah, now I'm aware of a rule, but we have a small line for mileage expenses on Christmas. It adds a few planes that they have, they're less than £200 total, where a person's mileage allowance plane, so I will be adjusting that through to the mayor or then for future use.
I'm going to point to my answer.
Thank you.
And thank you all for that, because I don't want it to appear a future mayor is using a lot more fuel.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah, I was just surprised that was all...
If you're lucky, Chair, just a few other things that I have to tell you in this section because it is internal affairs until the moving phase. Just so you're aware, I think I told you at last meeting that the chaos lease has been signed and is formally in place and there are, I am there working with the chaos lease holder, who has potential, a signee, that's the word to use. So, I'll confirm that. It's in terms of the direction of a part of a lease agreement, but it's feasible, there will be somebody different from the chaos in the next few weeks, so I'll let you know more on that. Stipend Awards on the 20th, I think only seven of you have declared whether you're coming or not. It is on the 20th here, although Andy there is involved as well, so I would like to vote as many as a component as possible. I appreciate it, so it's the 20th, is it six o'clock, Andy?
Six thirty is when the...
Okay. So, again, if you haven't notified Stephanie, my Stephanie in the office, I think she has contacted you, will let me know what the evening's events are, so if you can come, it helps me with catering and drinks. So, it's Thursday, the 20th, it's six thirty. Is that right, Chair? And now, one thing I need to advise you as clerk, that's quite sadly for me, I've had two resignations as councillors, so I'm formally advised to tell you that I've had written resignations from councillors, Richard Weller's councillor and Mike Owl, which I will now, I've told the monitoring officer that vacancies exist and they will, they will now, the advert will be produced to verify the casual vacancies in the two wards of Orington and...
Mayor.
Yeah, mayor, sorry, yeah. But I'm just advising you, not the principal authority, but nurses and I will advertise it. And as you know, due process, we go through and then we'll wait to see if there's demand from the electorate for elections. So, there's potential to buy elections in the coming weeks.
Councillor Tivers.
In the past, Mr. Chair, we've often seen a resignation letter or given reasons why these people have resigned. Is that going to be the case this time?
I, both have given me reasons, I mean, again, no disrespect to you as group of councillors, I mean, I will quote them both as some family questionable reasons, well, sorry. One is family and personal reasons are cited and the other one is for personal reasons. So, I have both letters, and I'm not keeping anything from you, I'm just advising you they are, that they've both attempted their resignation, which I have to accept, and they both take immediate effect at the time that they were given to them. So, but yeah, rest assured, you know, I have told them to disclose their reasons, but in fairness.
And in consequence, at the next meeting, we will be elected to be deputy mayor.
Well, yes, I'm glad you're welcome, that probably needed what I said now, so we can next week brief him, perhaps has a slightly different emphasis, but anyway, that's happened very, very recently for both councillors, so I have everything in writing and I've acknowledged and I'm ready to vote him to say thank you. But that's my little internal affairs section, I believe, Chair.
Thank you very much. And our move on, item number 11, 11.1, verbal updates from district county award councillors.
I had notification from councillor Charlesworth and councillor Lorimer that they wanted to speak, those are the only two I've received prior to occasion.
Okay, I'll take that. Councillor Charlesworth first, or...
Right. I'll not repeat what I've said on Woodside, just to, it's all good stuff. I did go down Peterborough Way the other day and the residents there, where you put the bin on the Lincoln Road adjacent to the entrance to Peterborough Way, which is the opposite side of road to Stilts Drive, they're very appreciative of that, it has reduced the amount of litter on Peterborough Way. They also assured me that, they asked me about whether, McDonald's did and I assured them that they did, but above that, they do organise dog fowl litter picking, if that's the right word to use, and they put that in the bin, and litter itself. And as I said, they've also got news on Woodside also, which I think one has already spoken to the town park on show of appreciation of what was done, certainly with the bin. So, that was very positive feedback there. On the other side of the road, the mini football pitch is very well used and... And I spoke with some of the lads, and some of the lads on this day I'm on, and they think it's a great idea. But they also, uh, like, I'm not sure what it's made of, but where you put that surfacing down, where the net ball pitches, that has gone down great. Because it was either a mudbank or it was a dust bowl, one or two. And so, um, uh, there are certainly positives, um, that are showing through. And, uh, as I say, all in all, on our side of the road, um, on the Lincoln Road side, yes, there's the improvements. And the mini, the mini football pitch is, uh, very well used, as you can tell from the lack, the grass gradually disappearing where they kick the ball around. But there hasn't been any more tree damage on there, and it was only where they were kicking the ball down, if you look, did get damage. So that's my report from the Holdingham Ward as far as I know.
Thank you very much. If there's no, no questions, I'll be on the council.
I actually did ring about.
No, 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 you were saying to councillor Charles Wood, you, you're right to speak next.
Thank you.
Uh, councillor Laura, would you like to give your report?
Yes, I would. Um, it's from Newfield, which, uh, the first phase of the building is nearly completed. The next meeting's tonight of June. If any of the two ward councillors would like to go, it's on a Friday at half past ten. And they're going to have an opening event in late May or early June, um, to celebrate the completion of phase one. They had a lot more people at the last, the meeting last Friday, who had previously not attended because they were wishing to go and have a look at how far the, the building development's gone. It's, I must say, it's a very good, uh, feeling down there. There are, there's a regular, a regular number of people go to the tenants' meeting and take a real interest in what's happening down at Newfield. Good sense of community.
Excellent. Thank you very much. If there's no questions on that, I'll quickly move on to, um, item number eleven-two. If we ever have any, any, uh, urgent reports, you can give us a report, looking around. There, right, okay, eleven-two. Uh, on to councillor Charles Wood.
Yeah, uh, this relates to the twenty-first of March, um, when I went to an all-day seminar, if you like, on make, making culture work for North Cesteven. Um, I put the list of attendees there. Uh, the lady organising it was a Claire Edwards of the National Centre for Craft and Design. And this was a brainstorming session, I think for about thirty-three people there, and I just have those names in it. And the reason I brought it to your attention, um, that it has a relevance, if you read the Central Lincolnshire Local Plan, and it might have, I mean, our, our means of getting in to the design and the protection of the heritage of Sleepford, because it is distinctly said in the Central Lincolnshire Local Plan, which the final version came out two days ago. Um, I mean, just read between the lines here, I mean, I'm reading off page seventy-two of that report. Gainsborough and Sleepford, although the shared approach is reasonable, the first criteria for any policy requires development proposals preserved and enhance the character, setting and appearance of the relevant conservation areas. And we did ask on our submission, and I think it can be now seen as being contained, and it certainly was the case, because we were on the fourth floor of the, um, of, and they all looked out, and the people who weren't used to CSU said, wow, this is brilliant. Look at the heritage here. When you look across to St Dennis's Church and everything, you must protect this, and this is what it was about. They're not asking for money, but there is now, um, a link between what our ends and beliefs are of Sleepford and what this group was saying. This was a brainstorm session, um, you know, sky blue thinking, I think is the term used in this. And there will be a formal report coming out. I'm not here to, uh, comment on that one a bit whatsoever. But what we did, we split up into groups during the day, and we weren't always in the same group, so there were various people. And it was to make culture work, uh, we need a good evidence and the expertise to collaborate locally. Uh, they want to bring local people in. You have a core group, and then you have different partners, uh, who will come in from time to time, but not be core to it. And then once they've finished, then some, they go on and, uh, somebody else comes into it. So that is what I've said here, to build on the district, uh, on the district's new art strategy and ensure North Cesteven, not North Cesteven, it's a kind of, but North Cesteven is a place where it is good, um, a great place to live and work. Um, okay, we've heard that before, but, um, the most common genuine, uh, attempts there. Um, the day explored ways to embed arts and culture into our society and show the value of arts within a community. Making culture work is an Arts Council England funded initiative, so it is a widen, they're doing this in other areas. The things that we had to bring out is the fact, okay, what is the role of arts and culture? And the thing that we did bring out, it means different things to different people. I mean, I'm not being this pariah, the people in Holdingham, maybe Woodside, have a different approach to what their regards are. Young people have a different approach to what arts is and what culture is to what somebody my age is. So there's a lot of work to be done. And, uh, I do believe round this table, now, you know, just being known as council representative, it was open to anybody, and anybody could have gone. And I would hope, hope that we will take on board this collaboration with the, um, with the centre and with, uh, North Cesteven. It was, it was a good meeting, we'll be having another meeting shortly. Um, find out all the people who want to contribute, and how do we measure impact to learn, um, what works and what doesn't work for Sleepford. But there is a call base, base in Sleepford, and there was no reason when we first read that Central Lincolnshire Local Plan, why Sleepford seemed to have been left out. There's no reason whatsoever, and I think that's been accepted in the final reform. And I think this maybe has the means by which we can collaborate, uh, and get involved. And our views as a, a council will be heard, and it will be different rather than opponents. That's not your argument. Thank you.
Councillor Jackson, uh, can I thank councillor Charles Wood for, uh, what you kind of say is very interesting. And I agree, we should be represented. Um, and, uh, if you can't go, then we need to find somebody else.
Well, as I say, it's not to, not to smear the.
Yes, but I'm saying, you know, as a down council, I think, support us.
Okay, yeah. I'll take that as a note, Chair, and it's back here.
Do we have to elect a representation for this sort of event in the future, or?
Um, it's, it's not a formal outside party, I don't believe, I think it was a seminar. Len, and I mean, as councillor Jackson said, we do participate in things like this. So if everybody gets requests for things like that, I will, you know, make sure that councillors are aware in case they want to attend. There are more formalised events that we do as representatives on outside parties, but this is more, um, reactive for us to attend, whereas that, that, I should note that, and we all appreciate councillor Charles Wood's, uh, good thoughts.
Thank you very much, councillor Charles Wood. And if we're, uh, I'll go on to eleven-three. Councillor Tipton, so you.
Um, thank you. Um, relation, relating to the, the previous, um, item, I was, I was intended to hear that meeting as well, all day. Uh, I think I saw a heritage chat on, sadly I had to miss it, because I was also double booked. I had to attend this first report I'm about to give you, which is the Sleepy R and P liaison panel, it's not at the same time. Um, but I would endorse everything that councillor Charles Wood has said. And it's linked to another heritage forum group that also runs. Uh, I'm the officers of, um, NCCD, which I also attend. Um, Sleepy R and P liaison panel, I think it's self-explanatory, we're coming to the end of, of the life of this panel. I would think there'll be one more meeting, there might be another one, but certainly one more meeting. Um, it's been going for several years now, uh, it has done three things principally. First, we, first of all, it's allocated a large number of money for grant funding for Sleepford and Currie Lethold. Secondly, it has, uh, sponsored apprenticeships in the local area, which have worked very well. And it also has supported projects for the schools and project packages relating to renewable energies on Gone Rancher Schools and help education of local people. As regards to the grant funding, which is the principal part that our panel has been involved with, uh, as you'll see from the report, all the grant funding for Sleepford has been awarded. But there's still a small amount of money which hasn't been spent yet on, by the groups that have been awarded the money. So we're waiting for that to happen. As regards to Kirby Lethold, and you'll see there, they was, um, we've been trying to give them a lot of money. Uh, we have failed to do so because they haven't come forward with sufficiently strong project. However, we have no reached the stage, and you can see there's a post, um, post meeting note there, uh, earlier two days ago. Uh, we have reached the stage, and we now have awarded a fine amount of money to Kirby Lethold. And that will be for, um, renovations and work on the parish church, the Dennis Parish Church in Kirby Lethold, putting in, um, uh, disabled access, a toilet, um, living front. And what they're trying to do is provide, they don't have a village hall in Kirby Lethold, so they're trying to provide the church as a community centre as well. I think it's a very well worth, well worth project, and I think we will wish them all success for that. Um, I just, my recommendation is just to note that, of course. Um, the second one is.
Councillor Pico, we.
It's a couple of moves. Yeah, it's just to, to, saying relation to your report for this, um, that we did receive with an, an award, um, which is how we managed to plant the trees for the schools, which went down an absolute treat. They loved it, and we've got the final one, which is, um, church language, and just they can't plant trees. We're getting them some planters and some trees, and possibly they're starting with their own gardening book, and, and possibly some little plants to get them started. So the funds were really well used and well received by the schools, so, yes.
Thank you very much for that report. I think we'll note the first one.
Yeah, well, if I can just add to that, don't forget that the super town council received an award and put in the Congress for it, and then for a lot, uh, a couple of years ago, from the same one. Um, can I move on then, yes, to the next one, the National Police Panel. Uh, meeting is held here in this room on twenty-eighth of March. I believe it to be self-explanatory, uh, that it will speed up the three priorities for the next period. Um, one is the monitoring of Mossford Recreation Ground, uh, now the new skate park is nearing completion. I wrote this on the fourth April. And to consider how the new facility impacts on youth behaviour. It's quite clear that with this new skate park, it's a great venue now. It's going to bring the youth in, and hopefully it will bring them and concentrate them there on Mossford Recreation Ground. Uh, and they can enjoy themselves and, and, um, have a happy pastime down there, if you ask, so. And it does allow, perhaps, uh, to please a great opportunity to keep an eye on the youth if they, um, should need to do so. And so that's one thing that the local police will be doing over the next, um, the next two or three months. Another one is monitoring parking problems, particularly those related to residential areas. Uh, and the final priority for the, um, DCSOs and the police is antisocial behaviour in the town. Um, although vandalism has probably decreased in areas, uh, there's still a certain amount of antisocial behaviour which should keep in mind. Um, my recommendation is, if you have a report specifically those, um, items that were perceived by town council.
Councillor Jackson. Could I, through the chair, ask councillor Tipton, what is the state of play regarding the speed monitoring cameras? Um, explain the question.
Can you dispute? Well, before I ask, there'd be laughter to take that. We have been working on it for three years. Yeah, that can, yes, um, after I identified one of the lamp posts, we went for the bowser that did that and contributed to that. Certainly, um, submission was made by the council, we paid our forty pound fee, and then the county council came back with a great respect, and asked for a picture of every lamp post. So I've had one of my staff sitting here, people are photographing every lamp post, so they don't miss that post. So they have all that information now. I sent in the request for the two electronic sensor monitors, the forty, um, passive signs, LCC highways, and they're checking all the lamp posts to see if they're happy that those are suitable. And I'm very hopeful that we might get a response. And rest assured, perhaps in the next few months, we will have, um, the, have them both erected. That's the ones that flash at you, and the passive ones that go up. So it's all been submitted. I apologise, I've taken quite a long time. But, um, it will be, hopefully we'll get positively well on that soon.
Councillor Brerick. Uh, on, uh, what's it, paragraph two, you know, you stated, uh, North Bray. We had, that was the reason I became, one of the reasons I became councillor, was that we had an accident on that, uh, separate crossing. Uh, that's why I did the research in the platform of crossings, so that we can actually slow down the traffic on that, uh, bridge. That was why I first started. And we still haven't, uh, got anything that will slow them down.
Councillor Tipton, you'd like to talk about. I, I personally went round and.
Yeah.
Put all lamp posts down.
Yeah.
Which would be down to mine in, in.
Yeah. No, I meant, uh, to slow down the traffic for that separate crossing.
You know, we were conscious of that when we decided on places where we wanted to sign them.
Right, councillor Branfield, by councillor.
Thank you. I wonder if councillor Tipton could amplify a little bit more about item two, the monitoring of parking problems? Because I mean, this is an ongoing and continuous problem in Sleepford, presumably involves both North Cesteven and also, um, Lincolnshire County Council. Are we going to move forward in what I regard as a positive fashion, considering a proper residential development?
The, um, the subject is raised by a resident, I think a bishop's called, or bishop's called, area. And he's particularly concerned about, um, parking there. Um, it involves, uh, six forms of the school zone. It also involves certain companies in that area. Um, I know that, uh, conversations have been taking place with the county council, with ABC, and, uh, the local, I think, town council. The companies have been spoken to, who have been talking appropriately. The schools have been spoken to, and the dialogue is between the residents, DCSOs and the schools, and there will be several that have taken place there. Why would say, it, it, progress has been made, but it is still a problem.
Uh, councillor Brerick.
Uh, I was just going to ask the same question as councillor Bran. Um, the whole of Sleep, the centre of Sleepford, it, it's, it's an issue. And I was interested in how they're actually going to monitor this twenty-four hours a day, or at least in, um, between nine and five, because Albien Terrace, for example, I do know, uh, without revealing any name, somebody who works in a business nearby, uh, blatantly parks there, and somebody who lives up there, who I know, continue to get the car, the car, when they return from work back into, um, that road. I have the same problem where I live. All the streets around Castle Causeway, et cetera, because, um, the other lines are a good idea, but people are, are encroaching on the roads that other people live on. It is a real, um, uh, issue.
Uh, thank you, Miss, councillor.
Um, this is a problem that we've had for over twenty years, and it should have been re-addressed when we had the new builds in that area. We could have had, uh, a parking area in any of those zones that we had a new build, but we did not complete that. Just by the railway line, there was areas that they could have done before they put the bases in. They knew they needed the parking spaces, but yet they did not fulfill that as a one-of-six requirement.
So, okay, I, I, I think we've had, had a chance to talk about your report, and I think we should nail notes. And thank you, thank you very much for this report, councillor.
And can I go on to the final one?
There's another one that I was looking for, so I'll have that in mind.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Unfortunately, thank you.
Yes, yeah, it, it.
Yes, I'm happy.
Um. As you'll see, the, the plan this year, unusually, first time we've done it, is to have a, a parade and service on the Saturday rather than on the Sunday. is to have a, a parade and service on the Saturday rather than the Sunday. There'll be no, um, armed, uh, current armed forces involved. The, the, um, a drumhead service will take place hopefully on Saturday the twenty fourth of June in the market place. And it will involve cadets, Royal British Legion, uh, the veterans associations, and I guess scouts and others of the uniform groups. Um, the only concern is, and that's why I reported, uh, to the council, is that of course that's market day. And, uh, the Lincoln Town Council has called the licence for the market and your permission, I think, will be required, um, or certainly your approval required so that the service can take place.
Could I ask Chair to you, what, what time of the day would normally take place?
I, well, it, it's the first time we've done it, but I anticipate it will be at about, sort of, eleven o'clock in the morning. That's not confirmed yet. As long, I do not see how it can be a problem because normally you would have all the marketplaces, that area is not used. Uh, considering that it's not a, uh, what's named, a farmer's market or anything like that, so it should be all right.
Yes, I would, I was right there. I thought it would be fairly easy to manage the market on that day and get hits on, on the opposite side all the way from just any of that activity.
Because markets is not the problem, isn't it? The problem is the car park. Because NKDC uses that car park on Saturday, so, um, as a car park, uh, even though we, we have the choice, if we wish to extend the market into that space, then they can't use it. But while we're not using it, then it gives a car park and NKDC will obviously utilise it because it brings in revenue. So I think it's a question of if we're happy, then just check in with NKDC that they are happy. Because it may not be, because it may lose revenue.
From the report, NKDC are aware, but just coming to you for your approval as a matter of course. Okay, I'll second the recommendation. Um, if there's no reason to speak against, conceal those in favor. Who's, are you against? It's the recommendation you did.
Uh, David seconded, sorry councillor.
One, two, three, four, five, go down like this. If you all put your hands up now, thirty councillors are. And any against and abstentions?
One abstention.
Okay, thank you very much. Um...